Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Councilwoman Maureen Byrne, as absent excuse, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the executive minutes of September 24, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Already been discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
A motion for the regular minutes of September 24, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion or corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome.
A small group tonight, but we'll have many more watching on TV later, so we will greet everyone whether you're here or not. Couple of things I want to cover, and then we have a little presentation, and I'm sure this will be covered also, but I just want to thank all for another great Bottle Hill Day. The feedback I got from our residents and many visitors that it was a tremendous event, packed from Kings Road all the way down Central Avenue and going up and down Main Street and other places. The cloud cover was welcomed by many, I actually appreciate the clouds on a day like that where we're going nonstop, and the late-day drizzle certainly didn't dampen anyone's spirits, and I want to thank all that made it happen. Lisa Ellis, thank you so much for your effort and leadership with that, all the volunteers, yeah, they're little gent. DDC members that helped out with the planning and the delivery of the great day, support from police, from the county sheriff's office, DPW, the many musicians that were there, support from MACA to make that happen, and according to, I was talking to Lieutenant Longo at the end of the day, that cleanup was finished about an hour of last year, and the crowds were about the same, so it was a great day all in all. And mark your calendars, because Bottle Hill Day will be celebrating its 45th anniversary next year, so it's quite a Madison tradition, and it's come quite a ways in 45 years, as many of us have. Employee of the Month for October is someone that's been mentioned many times for Employee of the Month, always stepping above and beyond, construction official Russ Brown for his dedication to expediting construction permits and inspections, especially his commitment in processing the construction inspections for Madison High School evenings and weekends so the school could start as planned, and his willingness always to help out all departments with special projects. And there was a lot going on in August with schools in both towns and Drew University that really Russ and his team stepped up for. And as you go around town in this month, please congratulate these three employees: Joel Phillips of Electric Utility, 20 years, on October 19; Michael Giordano of the Department of Public Works, 30 years, on October 25; and our judge, Gary Troxel of what is now our Joint Municipal Court, 20 years, on October 27. I don't know how long his father served, but he might be raveling his father's history there. And an announcement, and I kind of do these short notices because I like to look at the forecast before I commit to a talk in the park, but we will have our second talk in the park this Sunday, October 14, from 12 to 1, and trying to highlight some of our smaller parks. I did the first one at Waverly Place, but this one will be at the Tabor Mini Park, which is at the corner of the Little Triangle at Hillcrest and Greenville Road, Greenville Road, the little park that was done a beautiful beautification project by Cardinal Landscaping. So from 12 to 1 on Sunday, we'll be there. Any residents who want to come by and say hello or share thoughts, I'll be there to listen. And I want to come down below for a presentation, Assemblywoman Mila Jacy, please come forward. I'll set the stage a little bit and hand the microphone over, but we have a great partnership in Trenton in our legislative team of Senator, Governor Cody, John McKeon, and Mila Jacy, and we have a very proud site in Madison that has been serving active recreation, it's been serving our passionate gardeners, and it's been serving passive recreation with the hiking trails that are in there, in the MRC. And we've had multiple, Green Acres was there at the start, along with the County Open Space Fund and our own Open Space Fund that made it all happen, but we've been able to get more support to pay off the purchase price of this land that not only is being used to support all the residents of Madison and all their great programs, but was a site that could have supported two office buildings and the additional traffic and the change that it would have brought to Ridgedale Avenue. So we appreciate your great work in delivering this.
Thank you so much. It's always fun to be in Madison. I was at Bottle Hill Day, and it always amazes me that you managed to get good weather. It's my pleasure tonight to represent the team, Cody, Jacy, McKeon team, to award you this check for $500,000 out of Green Acres money. Madison is one of the communities that never fails to show itself and how beautiful it is, and the provision of recreational space for your residents and for visitors is second to none. It's really tremendously beautiful, and especially at this particular time, I would hope that we could get more of our residents to step up and demand that we reserve our open space because, as I travel through some of the towns in my district and beyond, the traffic is awful, and that has to be impacting the quality of our lives. And so for the children especially, for whom the future is not guaranteed unless we do the work we need to do, I want to thank you, I want to commend you, and hopefully we'll be back again next year to give you some more money to do good things with.
Thank you very much, and keep them happy.
CFO can get this in the bank right away?
I'll take a picture with my phone.
Health, Mr. Row, Council President Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have three items. First, Massa is sponsoring a bully presentation, a Grace Episcopal Church tomorrow night, Thursday, October 11. Doors will be opening at 6:30, the program starts at 7:00. They'll be presenting two short films about bullying awareness. The film's director, Frank Gigante, will talk about why he felt it was so important to make these films that raise awareness about bullying, and they'll also have a panel of experts, you'll be able to ask questions about bullying and how to prevent it, and this is intended for audiences ranging in age from 11 through adult. Next, another update, flu vaccinations, they're continuing. They'll be giving shots next Wednesday, October 17, and the following Wednesday, October 24, from 9 to 11 at the Civic Center on Walnut Street. And finally, the Health Department's annual free rabies clinic has been scheduled for Saturday, December 8, from 10 a.m. till 12 noon, at the Public Works Garage at 34 John Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a report from Engineering, but Bob Vogel is going to be giving a presentation and an update, actually, on the road construction that has been on the minds of lots and lots of people in Madison, but they did an absolutely stupendous job. We said that we were going to fix the roads, we said that we were going to fix the infrastructure, and it happened. And it caused a little bit of problems getting around town, but I think that when you see some of the finished product, you're going to be very proud, so Bob and his people did a great job. Thank you. So, getting back to Bottle Hill Day, from DPW, those guys did an excellent job, they were there all day long. They started off, I mean, the mechanics, the parks, the roads, and the sewer department all worked on getting whatever was necessary for Bottle Hill Day. The mechanics prepared all the DPW dump trucks, you know, that were set in motion to keep everybody safe while doing all of their works, repairing police vehicles and meter, the meter two vehicles. Parks Department prepared for Bottle Hill Day, they were there all day, emptying garbage and taking care of whatever needs there were, while they were fixing up the athletic fields for the recreation activities. The roads department, they were removing and repairing sidewalks, they did a lot of backfilling, they removed trees and stump grinding, and while they were doing that, they were still working on Bottle Hill Day as well. The sewer department handled all of their emergency flood issues and their sewer blockage calls, and went, again, assisted with preparations for Bottle Hill Day. So we thank them because they did some good work, and everything looked very, very nice the next day, so congratulations to Lisa, to Michael for helping Lisa, and DPW, thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Well, thank you, Mayor. From the Clerk's Office, in anticipation of the November 6 general election, the Borough Clerk's Office will be open for late-night voter registration until 8 p.m. Tuesday, October 16, which is the last day to register before the general election. Registration forms, as well as mail-in ballot applications, are available in the Clerk's Office and online at morriselections.org. Another reminder, electric utility rebate program ends December 1, forms are available in the Clerk's Office and online. From the Finance Department, the staff have been working on the insurance schedules that are submitted to the Joint Insurance Fund. Every year the schedules are reviewed to make sure they have up-to-date valuations and that all fixed assets, vehicles, and equipment are listed on the schedule. It is a labor-intensive but very important project. The Administration and Finance are continuing to work on the 2019 budget, they anticipate coming to the Council with a draft five-year capital plan at the December Council meeting. The Chief Financial Officer has been working with the new state financial automation submission tracking, or FAST system. This system will make municipal budgeting across the state more consistent and will eventually show officials to, allow officials to more easily compare budgets from various towns. Over the past two weeks, the CFO has been inputting the 2017 and 2018 budgets into the FAST system, and he says it's the most enjoyable thing he's ever done. Thank you.
Ooh, says a lot in itself. Public Safety, and we also have Community Affairs, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as Police Department is concerned, the Police Department will once again be hosting the annual food drive to benefit the Interfaith Food Pantry of Morris County. This is a significant and major event, we tend to collect a very impressive amount of food, and I would hope that everyone here and listening in would participate. As you could imagine, the suggested food items are those things that are not perishable, instant potatoes, turkey gravy, coffee, tea, I won't look down the entire list, I'm sure it'll be available. I'd also like to tell you that after the 31st of October, the Interfaith Food Pantry will be accepting turkeys, but they have to go directly to the pantry, which is at 2 Executive Drive in Morris Plains, it's 2 Executive Drive. As you know, a number of our local supermarkets hand out coupons if you spend a certain amount of money, and those coupons are good for a free turkey. May I suggest we use those coupons to go to the Interfaith pantry. As far as the Fire Department is concerned, they had, as usual, a busy month, a total of 109 calls, 25 general alarms, 23 steel alarms, they have 31 investigations, and 30 EMS calls. Also, as an interesting feel-good kind of story, on Monday, it doesn't start out that way, all right? On Monday morning, September 26, the Madison Fire, Ambulance, and Police Departments responded to a report of a four-year-old child stuck in a bicycle. His leg was stuck, and the firefighters were able to free him, but in doing so, they had to use the jaws of life, and of course they destroyed his bike. Feeling bad about the damaged bike, members of the Madison Fire Department purchased a new red bicycle and a helmet for this four-year-old guy, and he was not injured, so he was happy in every possible way, and it was great of our firemen to do that. Those are the only reports I have today. Thank you.
And Utilities, Mr. Hoover.
Yes, thank you, we'll start with the Electric Department. In addition to the 50 regular markouts and house services, three new transformers and connections were installed and completed at the Elks Club, and they also serve the Wells Fargo Bank across the street. The crew went into a transformer halls to turn on all the time clocks for all the postlight outlets to work for Bottle Hill Day. Temporary electric outlets were also set up on the corner of Elm and Central. At Atlantic Health and Geraldo Farms, they set seven new poles and hung a 50 KVA transformer to give them temporary service. The electric service at the Madison High School Maintenance Garage burned, so they had to upgrade their service. The Electric Department had to replace two poles and run a secondary cable to feed the service. For the Water Department, the hydrant flushing program has started, in case you haven't noticed. You may experience low pressure, water discoloration, or vibration of your internal water system. These conditions are all temporary and can be eliminated by flushing your water from a laundry sink or outside faucets. AC Schultes, an outside contractor, performed the annual office testing on the five wells in Madison and three booster pumps, checking that our primary capacity hasn't diminished, and they were successful. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And one other quick announcement, tomorrow's farmer's market has been canceled with the forecast of heavy rains, we're expecting rainfall totals of two to three inches, so it's a precautionary measure, a preemptive step, so be careful out there tomorrow. Communications and petitions.
Unreceived, Mayor.
Hey, this is our first of two invitations for discussion, as you know, this one is limited to items that are on our agenda discussion list or resolutions that are listed on the consent agenda. If you want to comment on anything else, you will have a chance shortly later in the meeting. The two agenda discussions today are road reconstruction update and Morris Habitat for Humanity home application, and to quickly go through the resolutions, so you can either comment on or you at least know what is on the consent agenda. Resolution 271 is a transfer of a plenary retail distribution license, that's a liquor license, and this is actually just clearing up a corporation setup that's staying in the same hands, and it's a pocket license and is not being currently used. Resolution 272 is final payment change order request from Rapid Pump and Meter Service, amount of $15,954, bringing the total payment to $797,000 for the North Street pump. 273, raffle licenses for Drew University. 274, release of surety bond for Stangle Group Block 1801 Lot 9, which is 14 Elmer Street. 275, appointing Peter Haskin to position as part-time senior citizen van driver. 276, rejecting non-responsive bid for 2018 removal and recycling of leaves. The bid was flawed, and so that was rejected, and went to the next lowest bidder, so 277 is awarding the leaf removal to Rotandi and Sons of Summit, and this is not collecting at the homes, but removing them from DPW to be recycled and decomposed, sorry. Resolution 278, awarding professional services contract to JA Malik Architects, design project for replacement field houses at Dodge Field, amount of not to exceed $16,000. This is just bringing up the support houses at Dodge Field that are outdated and don't meet today's standards. 279, authorizing the application of Morris County Home Investment Partnership for Madison Housing Authority, and that is our second discussion agenda. 280 is dedication of user fees and rental income to amending the resolution 275, so the fees can be reserved for the turf fields, and that will be discussed and voted on separately. And 281 is restricting open space funds for additional turf field contingent upon matching financial support from the Madison Board of Education for a future turf field. And 282 is partnership authorizing the Madison Community Pool location for an event, partner with the DDC and Madison Community Pool, it's the Madison Food Truck Fest on October 28, 2018. And Resolution 283, rescinding appointment of acting plumbing subcode official. And 284 is approving raffle license for the Madison Ice Hockey Booster Club, Inc. So those are the resolutions you may comment on, and will be voted on later in the meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on those items, please step forward, state your name, your address, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but at three, I will give you a one-minute warning and allow you to go to four. Rob, welcome.
Thank you. Let me sign it, please. Resolution 280.
There's going to be a separate discussion on that? No, that would be, resolutions you can comment on now, just name and address, start.
I'm sorry, my name is Rob Cattellnow, I live at 272 Woodland Road in the borough of Madison. Has anyone spoken to the MAF regarding Resolution 280? A rhetorical exercise, I know someone has. So what I'm curious is, why would you ignore the volunteers that actually are party to that agreement and who actually raised money for the purpose? And secondly, I'd just like to ask, what does it matter? Because Ordinance 45-2013, which carries the force of law, specifically states that the user fees shall be collected, there shall be a $20 per player per season user fee for the use of Madison Recreation Complex Fields 1 and 2, turf fields by the following, recreation and/or travel sports programs, which are recognized by the borough, yada, 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 and it specifically says that these must be used, must, by force of law, for debt service, operation and maintenance of the turf fields at the Madison Recreation Complex. Since there's a law that covers the use of it, why does it matter what the resolutions say, since resolutions don't carry the force of law? And I would also like to ask, and I can come back at the end, I understand at the last meeting, you guys took three years of user fees and field rentals and put them into reserve, so what I'm trying to understand is, are you saying, then, that the fields cost nothing? Because I know that I've heard from many people how expensive they are and what a burden they are on the town, but if in fact you're reserving 100% of the user fees, and there is a law, a law, that states we have to spend the user fees and field rentals for field maintenance, et cetera, and debt service, then I guess the fields don't cost anything, so I'm just kind of confused.
Thank you.
So we answer the questions, or should I?
Yeah, you ask the questions, and then if you're done, so we answer when you're done, so if you have any other comments.
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Rob.
I'll stay here, though, till you answer, just in case.
No, it's actually, the routine now is, the routine is, take a seat, so it's not a dialogue, sorry.
The meeting is run by modified Roberts Rules of Orders, right?
No, the meeting is done the same way as it was done when you were here, which is you're allowed to have three minutes, three minutes, not back-and-forth dialogues. You have your time, you have your time, Rob.
But my time isn't up yet, so I'll continue. The reason I'm asking if it's run by modified rules, Roberts Rules, is in case someone in the audience wants to cede their time, they're allowed to under modified, well, modified Roberts Rules of Orders do.
Yeah, we don't do that, thank you.
The meeting is run by the rules.
We'll cover this in the, as we discussed with the ordinance, but, you know, straightforward, this does not change the, or the resolution, it doesn't change the intent of the ordinance, it just reserves the fees for future maintenance by putting it towards a reskinning. The resolution does have, you know, a power in that it does reserve, you know, it sets fees and reserves dollars, and so it, though it's not in ordinance form, there are some things that are done by resolution, some by ordinance.
I think Austrie, our CFO and the Rec Director will handle this when we get to the resolution.
Yep, yep, so otherwise we'll cover other things. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Dave Bluber, 7 Lawrence Road, and I would like to speak in favor of my understanding, at least, of Resolutions 280 and 281, and in effect, I support the plan to accrue or reserve user fees and open space tax income in the trust in order to pay for the reskinning of the MRC turf funds, and then ultimately to add new fields in partnership with the Board of Education. This is a pay-as-you-go approach, as opposed to bonding, and my experience has been that Madison has had a long bipartisan tradition of pay-as-you-go funding for these kinds of projects. My good friend and former Republican mayor Gary Ruckelhaus believed in pay-as-you-go for capital investment, and in fact made it a policy during his years on council and as mayor. Like Gary, I believe that bonding should be reserved for all but the most extraordinary projects, such as the purchase of the MRC or the construction or addition to new public buildings. Reskinning the fields is not an extraordinary project, and the alternative of bonding is not appropriate way to fund it. At the time of the reskinning would be performed, as I understand it, the bonding, we would still be amortizing the existing 20-year bonds that paid for the original turf fields, and yes, we do pay for them, and they're not for free. Effectively, we would be bonding on top of bonding. If we bond, Madison taxpayers would ultimately have to pay not only the principal, but all the bond interest over the lifetime of the bonds, and I would note that interest rates are going up as we speak. If we accrue the money, this money will earn interest as it is accrued, and the total cost of the project to the taxpayer will be much less. As for the user argument, user pay argument, I find that to be a false argument, and certainly irrelevant to people such as myself. My youngest child graduated from Madison High School in 1995, so my family will never be users of the field, no matter how the cost is incurred. The value to me of the project is the quality of the recreation facilities, like the quality schools, that make Madison a desirable place to live, and that makes my house worth more to a future buyer. That's a good thing, and I support the project, but I ask that the borough do it at the least possible cost to the taxpayer, and this is by our CFO's fiscal responsibility, pay-as-you-go way.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Mark?
Looking at the resolution as printed in the agenda here, I don't see the actual cost of what's going, what the dollar amounts that's increased, but it doesn't seem to be necessary. We have a... of what's going, what the dollar amounts that's increased, but it doesn't seem to be necessary if we have a reserve fund that's in place. That can be used for reskinning, maintenance, or whatever, there's extra money there, so it's unnecessary to make any impact on the taxpayer. The impact really isn't necessarily on the whole taxpayers, it really is just on the user, the user being, you know, the player or the child, who is the player, that then impacts the families of those, you know, of those children. So, you know, we'd just like to consider that, you know, the impact of raising these fees when there already is a reserve in place. The last thing I would say, what Mr. Louver said about his children, I'm not using the field, is that consider possibly your grandchildren, maybe, residing in Madison and using the field, so may not be impacting him today or his direct family today, but it could impact those that remain in Madison for years to come.
Thank you. So then we'll, again, clarify most of those as we introduce the resolution. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, sorry, Kathy, resetting the clock.
Kathy Daly, West End Avenue. So since you're going to be clarifying things, one of the things that I would like to have clarified as you speak through this is, I understand you're reserving the fees back to 2015, 2016, I think, right? 2016, 2017, and 2018 user fees. So we're going backwards in time and reserving fees backwards in time, which raises two questions in my mind. First of all, so we've been raising these user fees with the expressed and understood intention, from what you told me at the last meeting, to use that to pay off the debt that was incurred initially to purchase, to build the fields. So if that's what that money was targeted for, and that's what all the users were paying it for, and we had that money in the fund to use it for that purpose, what funds are we using instead to pay those bills? So I hope you will clarify that, because if we're taking, I also am curious, how is that money still there? How did it not get used already? So if the money is still there and hasn't been used, then that begs the question, do we have too much money in that fund? So that's the first thing. And then, the second thing is, my understanding is that we are not permitted to reserve fees going backwards in time. So if that is a misunderstanding on my part, I would like, I would like that clarified, how we feel that we can go backwards in time and reserve money that was intended for a different purpose and repurpose it after the fact. So those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. And Jim, you got that to cover when we? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. Road reconstruction update. Carmella, do you want to introduce our engineer here, or he can, needs no introduction at this point?
I don't think that Bob needs an introduction. He's been all over Madison, looking at the roads, so, but thank you, Bob. Tell your guys, they did a really great job. We had some really good vendors out there doing their job, and the roads looked great.
So, thank you, everyone. And, yeah, I think as an update to the presentation that Carmella put together about, I guess it was last meeting or a month ago, it might have been a month ago. Obviously, the contractor showed up when they were supposed to, and we managed to close out our projects for the municipality with regards to Greenwood Avenue, Kings Road, and Elmer Street. I'm sure anyone that's driven around town has felt the relief of traffic concern over the past week or so. To see those, that paving job done, the milling and overlay done, the striping done is certainly a great relief to us all, because I know it's been a really long summer, so thank you for bearing with us. And I suppose as an update, I should, I should let you know that we had a meeting with the county of Morris today about Central Avenue. The county awarded a contract to AJM Contractors. Central Avenue is our last road that we want to complete this year, a county project, and has a fair amount of concrete work to do, signage, striping, milling and overlay. They want to start that project on October 22nd, which is about a week and a half, and they want to finish that project on November 16th, and the only question about that is how many weather days are we going to get in that period of time, and how quickly is the winter going to set in? And so, if you pay any attention to the almanac or anything like that, it looks like it's going to be an early winter, and hopefully, the county, the county's project isn't affected by that, we can actually finish on November 16th with their contractor, AJM, but certainly that is something that is going to be our prime objective for the next month or so. But again, the municipality was allowed to finish up their projects, and that's the big story for our capital program for the year, great news. With the county project left over and some public service work up at Albright and Sampson Avenue, that should pretty much round it out for the entire year. I know that the public service recently finished Community and Cook, even though I see some trench repair that needs to have some attention there, so they'll have to come back and do that. I know that there's been some service issues as well, which they have come back and attended to, so, again, next month or so, hoping to get everything cleaned up, including Central Avenue and the public service projects. The big picture, and the big picture is what I was asked to mostly come and talk about is on the screen behind me, and that was a little roadmap put together by Mike Blesse, thank you, Mike. And what it shows is the road improvement projects over the past five years. And if you look at the green highlighted lines throughout the borough of Madison, you can see that there is a great number of significant roads that were accomplished over the last five years. And so it's our hope that we get 15 or 20 years out of those road surfacing projects and those reconstruction projects, and we will be far away from the problems that we had with traffic and circulation this past summer. And I think we, I think the idea in showing this map is to show you how extensive the road reconstructions have been over the past five years, to show you how the main thoroughfares in town have really been affected over the last five years, and specifically say, this year, we know, was a very tough year, so thank you for bearing through it. Michael has split this into three categories, 2013 to 2018 resurfacing and reconstruction projects. Orange is projects still under construction, you can see Central Avenue, I think I have a pointer. Central Avenue here remains to be done with the county of Morris, and public service is working over here on Sampson Avenue. Where is it? An Albright circle in this area right here. The last issue, which Mike has highlighted in blue, proposed 2019 Madison Road resurfacing and reconstruction projects. This is for our 2019 capital program, which we're going to go into the budget discussions on this fall, and we will pull together another, hopefully ambitious, program of both resurfacing and reconstruction of the roads for the borough. But the roads that are part of this, you can see Glenwild Road here, which we have submitted a state aid assistance project application for DOT on this past week. We're hoping to get some funding from the state on that, it's a fairly significant project, it's on your capital program since last year, and will be on our capital program again as a high priority this year. And hopefully, we will get an answer from the state by the end of this year on whether that project, we will get funding assistance on or not. The others are mostly local streets without any significant cut-through or circulation issues, so hopefully, next year will be, while ambitious, much quieter in terms of traveling around town. The one exception here is this Hamilton Street project, which ultimately is a road resurfacing project and should be able to be accomplished in a week's time, shouldn't take all summer to accomplish, so. The two major thoroughfares, Glenwild is a reconstruction project, will take several months to accomplish, and Hamilton Street will probably take a week to get the milling and overlay work done and restore circulation as it should be. Again, big picture, we've got over 60 roads in the last five years, which we've accomplished. We're hoping that next year is less impactful to the overall circulation in the borough of Madison, and we look forward to planning with you for the 2019 capital budget year. Any questions?
So, wait, just a second, I just reinforced a couple. One, we'll get this up on RoseNet, so people can take a closer look at it, and the colors come out, but a little washed out on the screen, so you'll be able to see it better on your home computer. I think a couple of key things is, as you've mentioned, the, all, these projects are all over town, include neighborhood streets and major thoroughfares. The list of streets that we had partnership with the state for funding is key, because we don't leave money on the table that can help stretch our tax dollar. And the other thing is, once we finish after next year, the northern section of Greenwood, we pretty much will have every major east-west, north-south thoroughfare in good to excellent condition.
For the report, Mayor, that's exactly what Bob was going to say.
I was using the Google translator, an engineer to English. Pat?
Yeah, so a couple of questions. One, I know we, according to this, we redid Burnett recently, and now with Cook, having been under construction by PSE&amp;G, do either they have plans, or do we have plans to redo both those roads, because they're in really bad shape?
Cook Avenue should be on our plan in conjunction with the parking lot. I know we have a reconstruction of the parking lot planned, and so it's going to be fairly extensive, and I think that extensive work ought to delay whatever we're doing on Cook Avenue until the parking lot is done. So once we get that parking lot done, I would say Cook Avenue makes sense, whether it's just a milling and overlay project on our county co-op, or whether we do more work with curving and sidewalks, that's something we can decide during this budget year, but...
Yeah, I think as, as we get into the budget, we want to talk about both the parking lot and Cook, and the reason the two are tied together is our, right now, current plan for Cook Avenue parking lot is to reduce the number of curb cuts going into the parking lot, which kind of lends itself to a more extensive project than not to do them, that they need to be tied together.
Okay, good, because that was my next question, so we'll hold off. But I'm assuming, given what the mayor has just said and what I know about that project, I'm assuming we'll get sort of draft drawings out and hold some sort of well-publicized meeting about that, because that'll be a, we get a lot of input on that, I'm sure.
Yes.
The other two things are Glenwild, obviously, I'm hopeful we'll get all that stuff lined up so that can get done during the summer. It would be a disaster trying to get that done before school ends or after school starts at Torrey J.
Makes sense.
The state timing could possibly impact the schedule there, Pat, and so...
Is it possible to delay it till the following summer, then? I mean, that is the only way in and out of that building.
Right. It's a very good point, and I think we have to wait to see how quickly the state turns around their answers.
Okay.
I think we are in a very good position to immediately submit contract agreements to them.
Okay.
But, you know, how quickly they turn around the agreement is the question, and if we can somehow get it, get that agreement in hand by February, March of next year, we stand a very good chance of getting out to bid and getting a contract awarded for the summer.
And if they don't come back till May?
If they don't come back to us, our choice is the fall or next summer.
Okay. I think you really need to seriously, that's the one, that may be the one road in town where there's just no other options for the school buildings that are around it. I mean, you're going to find out what the challenge is going to be when we repave Central for Central Avenue for a high school to a lesser extent this year. You know what it's like when we did Kings?
I agree, yeah. Good point.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Bob. Morris Habitat for Humanity Home Application.
I can take that one, Mayor. This is a resolution supporting an application for a $300,000 grant by the Madison Affordable Housing Corporation, the amount of, to support the creation and construction of four additional affordable housing units on the existing Rexford Tucker site on Chateau Theory. And the goal would be is that if they get the funding, then out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the borough would provide $400,000 in the combination of the $300,000 grant and the $400,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would fully fund the, these additional units. And as we've discussed at length over the years and months, we are involved in a very lengthy process with regard to affordable housing and our obligation, and that's working its way through the courts and negotiations, and this is a part of trying to identify other funding sources to assist us trying to create this housing and meet our obligation.
Thank you. Questions, comments? That's Resolution 279 on the consent. Now we're on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Orderance 46-2018, scheduled for hearing tonight, was introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Wednesday, September 12th, 2018. Orderance 47-2018 was introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, September 24th, 2018. Both were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
Orderance 46-2018.
Orderance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 185-39 taxi stands to delete parking spaces dedicated to taxis on Lincoln Place.
I open the hearing for Orderance 46-2018. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Orderance 46-2018.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wookwood?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare Orderance 46-2018 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Orderance 47-2018.
Orderance of the Borough of Madison, amending Section 136-32 of the Borough Code entitled "Special Event Permits."
I open the hearing for Orderance 47-2018. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Orderance 47-2018.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wookwood?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare Orderance 47-2018 adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance, ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to the second of invitations for discussion. This is now, you may comment on any topic, same rules apply. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give a one-minute grace and ask you to stop at four. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading this evening has a hearing date set for November 12th, 2018. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
And just note that it is November 12th, because we have a Wednesday meeting, don't have enough time between now and our next meeting. I call up the ordinance at first reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Orderance 48-2018, Orderance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for reseeding and repair of borough parks and recreation fields.
Mayor, I move Orderance 48-2018.
I second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wookwood?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda resolutions, which will, we are pulling out the ones related to the funding sources on the field, so...
I have the numbers.
Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure... Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolutions R. 271 through 279 and R. 282 through 284.
A second.
Any council discussion or any others that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wookwood?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion for Resolution 280-2018?
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, and this is the dedication of funds, and so we have some questions that need to be answered. I guess Zach and then our CFO can come up.
Just go off our brief summaries on both of the relevant topics, which are MRC resurfacing and the current field situation and implications of a new turf field. Obviously, on all the financing, financing stuff, I'll defer to Jim. As a social studies teacher and part-time rec, records outside of my wheelhouse. All right. So while the MRC continues to be our most valuable asset, the surface will need replacement sometime in the not-too-distant future. Reasonable expectation for the usable life of a turf field is roughly 10 years, and the surface is covered under warranty for eight. The turf at Monica Field needed replacement after roughly eight years. While the MRC currently shows no signs of needing imminent replacement, we're now in our seventh year, and will need to plan for resurfacing in the near future. Based on many discussions at RAC over the past year or so, the clear preference of the committee is to fund the replacement via user fees rather than asking the volunteers to raise funds. The RAC will look to evaluate the user fees in the coming months, and with the help of Jim Burnett, arrive at a plan that redirects these fees to the replacement of the surface rather than debt service. And then on the current field situation, in my report for the previous meeting, I discussed the impact of the lack of lighting at many of our fields, particularly Monica Stadium. Because of that lack of lighting and the nature of MHS athletic schedules, the rec programs effectively only have access to two turf fields, Monday through Saturday in the fall, and only a few fields with lights. This places an extra burden on our grass fields and significantly limits our ability to rest them, especially grass fields with lights like Dodge Field, the Rosedale Soccer Field, and the ice rink, all of which have shown varying degrees of wear. All of this considered, it becomes clear that adding not only lights, but an additional turf field with lights would be a tremendous benefit to Madison Athletics. The ideal location for such a field would be the area immediately above the MRC that includes the MHS varsity baseball field, the former football practice field, and the field hockey grass field. In addition to being located directly in between the MRC and MHS, there are several advantages to this location. Some of the necessary infrastructure is already in place, there's plenty of parking, and the field is set back from the surrounding residential areas by a significant distance.
Any council members, any questions for Zach?
Thank you.
Pat?
A couple. One, I had a conversation with Dave Carver after the first meeting, because he had watched the video, and he was asking me some questions. I got the sense from him that the rec committee really hadn't come to a conclusion about what the user fees should be set at, or the actual whether they should be, we should be reserving now, or they should be paying for it later. So I don't know if there was really any consensus coming out of that committee, and that's always been sort of one of my concerns, is, you know, the Recreation Advisory Committee, but we're not getting advice directly from them. So that's one. The second is, on the high school, I don't necessarily disagree, because when I was on the Board of Ed, I always thought that was an ideal sort of way to put the properties together, but, you know, we still have to talk to the Board of Ed. I actually had a chance to talk to a couple of people from the Board of Ed at Bottle Hill Day, and I didn't initially get the sense that they were truly on board with this. So the second resolution, I think, is sort of putting the cart before the horse, and I'd like to get a better sense from them that they're on board with some sort of plan. In fact, that we even have a plan, because I don't even know what that field would cost, or what it would cost to light it. It's a nice concept, but at this point, I think we're way, we're a long way away from figuring out what we're going to do there.
Duly noted on point two. On point one, I will say, however, we have not settled specifically on the timing of the user fee increases, or if we need to increase the fees at all. Still don't even have a formal quote for resurfacing, we have rough estimates. I will say, however, that this idea came specifically from RAC. I had not heard a single dissenting voice on it until now, and, and the concept, or it was a very clear preference for using user fees as opposed to raising funds. Idea of raising funds, to, I mean, to put it bluntly, went over like a lead balloon.
No, I don't disagree with that. I think the question is, though, do you, do you come up with a way to have the people who are actually using the fee, the new, the new field, or fields, pay for them as opposed to residents and users today, taking money that they've been paying in for the last several years, that we've been paying towards open space tax, and reserve it, and then use that? That's, I think that's still up for debate in that committee.
Yeah, that's fair, but I do want to stress...
Okay.
Completely that we will be evaluating this at RAC over the next couple of months, and everyone is on board, everybody's currently evaluating their own. The situation right now is that a lot of our registration fees are significantly low compared to conference plans. For example, our junior football program until recently was charging about $130 compared to Chatham, which was charging $230, $240. Recently, they brought that up to $190, but there's obviously still some wiggle room, and that's the case almost universally. So there was general agreement at RAC for well over a year now that this was the way to go.
That answered my next question.
Let me just finish my statement. You know, my big issue has also been the fact that, I'm not quite sure why we needed to do this right now, the money's not going anywhere, and I think we really don't have any formal plans, we don't have formal recommendations from a lot of groups. I would like to see a lot of that. I know 10-plus years ago, there was a significant amount of work done before the MRC was developed. Yes, there was a lot of controversy after the fact over when it was done, how it was done, but there was a more solid plan in place that recognized what the rec programs currently needed, you know, how they had kind of grown, and where they expected to be in the out-years, and I think that would be more helpful if we had seen or saw all that before we were voting a lot of this stuff.
Yeah, that's a reasonable point, but to that, I will say that Dave did come here two years ago, deliver a presentation that effectively laid out the exponential growth of a lot of these programs, and that kind of speaks to a lot of these issues that we're facing here, where uncertain fields and the need for additional fields, scheduling challenges involved that require us to really look at, you know, number one, maintaining the existing fields and resurfacing them in a timely fashion. Can't imagine what would happen if we were ever without the MRC for any length of time. Beyond that, adding to our, our current array of fields.
Any other questions for Zach? Okay, thank you, Zach, excellent report. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Zach, just to confirm, the Recreation Advisory Committee had talked about $50 as a, illustratively as a number that was being bounced around as a positive user.
Yeah, $50 came from, we spoke with FieldTurf informally. FieldTurf gave us...
You need to get right up the microphone, sorry.
FieldTurf gave us a general quote of $5 a square foot. $5 a square foot at the MRC for resurfacing would come to roughly a million or a million and one. The current user fees at $20 per player generate roughly $40,000 a year. If you take $20 to $50, you generate $100,000 a year, $100,000 a year. Over 10 years gets you to roughly $1 million, which would be the cost of the resurfacing. So that's, that was just a general number that was thrown out. That resurfacing figure could, could be anywhere realistically from $700,000 to 1.1.
One other question, and I think Dave raised this with me. In the, you know, current sort of plan with the open space, we've asked the groups to contribute X, and the open space contributed some multiple of X. In this case...
20%.
Yeah, the users would literally be paying for almost 100% of the costs. I think that was the other thing that they wanted to really have a conversation about was, you know, should the, the open space or the town bear a more equitable share than they have in the past?
And, and that's, I think, more of an opinion, which we don't want to put our Recreation Director...
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm just saying, though, this is all sort of part and parcel of, we should have a bigger conversation about this instead of discussing it, you know, while we're doing this sort of piecemeal through resolutions and reserve motions. That's my...
Yep. Yep.
Zach, first of all, your math was very good back there, 1.1 million and everything, you're, you're spot on. So, no, you're, Mr. Melick would be proud. The vote at the last council meeting, Resolution 280-2018 this evening, only referred to the reservation of user fees for turf reskining, neither mentioned the $50 user fee. That number, as we've talked about, came from RAC and the Recreation Director, and I used it to illustratively show if that user fee, if that was the user fee, then the user fees could fund what we think is the current estimate for reskining the fields. By dedicating and reserving the user fee and rentals for reskining, the council is basically committing that the debt service for the turf field will be paid out of the open space tax. So that's different, right? The resolution prior to this, that 218 is amending, talked about the user fees being used towards paying off the debt. We never collected, I think, in any year, user fees and rental fees that were enough to cover all of the field debt service payments. The field debt service payments are over $120,000, and I don't think in any one year we collected that amount. I know in 2000, oops, looking at the wrong number, in 2017, for example, we collected $74,193 of user fees and rentals, so it's not, not coming close enough. So the open space trust fund has always covered a portion of that debt service. This resolution is basically saying, okay, the open space will cover the debt service going forward, and this, these funds will be dedicated towards reskining. So to clarify, funds are deposited into the open space trust fund and expended out of a single account. We don't have different checkbooks for user fees, for the tax that we collect, for the interest revenue. All revenue is placed into the trust account. There are questions about how the 2016 and 2017 user rental fees, how they can be reserved for reskining if they've already been dedicated to debt service. The answer is that all the funds, as I mentioned, are commingled. By dedicating the 2016 and 2017 user rental fees to reskining, the council is in essence saying that we're going to use existing open space tax dollars to pay the full amount of the debt service, instead of just part of the debt service, which we've done the last few years. Certainly dedicating the revenues for reskining and reserving funds for future turf fields from a CFO standpoint, most fiscally proven approach, so I'm certainly comfortable with that. As per Chapter 136 of the Borough Code, which was modified by Ordinance 45-2013, that's what was mentioned earlier, the fees shall be, the fees shall, quote, the fees, quote, shall be used for debt service, operation, and maintenance of the turf fields. Reskining the turf fields is considered maintenance and falls within the scope of the ordinance. I don't think we're at odds with that ordinance. User fees are set by council with advice of Recreation Advisory Committee, and as Zach said, the Recreation Advisory Committee, sounds like they're going to pick it up. Council has not voted to increase the fees, however, based on discussions with the Recreation Director, the RAC has discussed this for months. The next step in the process, as Zach discussed, would have the RAC consider any increase in fees and submit their suggestions to council. Once a decision is made on the fees, we will be able to, then, an ordinance would be changed that, to change Chapter 136, and then I can amend the pro forma. Right now, the pro forma is showing $50 in user fees from 2000, and taking 2016 and 17 and 18, and then in 2019 going forward, $50 in user fees, we get there, we get to the 1.1 million. So we can certainly refine and will refine our estimates once we have a better idea what the turf field will cost, and once we have a better understanding of what the RAC and what the council want to do for setting the user fees. Questions?
Yep, and just reinforce one more time, you, Zach said it, and you said it also, this ordinance does not raise the user fees, that is just dedicating the user fees. That is more to come on that. But we'll start with Ostry.
I have comments, so if he has questions, let him go ahead.
Yeah, we, question, right now, yeah, question to Jim, and then we'll have comments overall.
Sure. The, you know, when I read the ordinance and the resolution, the average person would look at that and say, as you said, if the user fees are not covering the debt service in a given year, then that means all the user fees went towards the debt service in that given year. So I can understand that we have money in the open space fund, and if we, the council wants it dedicated towards this, towards this reserve, that seems fair. I mean, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but it doesn't seem possible to go back in time and capture money that should have already gone towards debt service. I, I don't get that part of the resolution. How do we do that?
I can answer that, Mayor. I mean, in reality, what we're doing is taking an equivalent amount of the open space tax funds that are there and saying, this is how much was raised in user fees and rentals and was dedicated to debt service back then. We're going to take that equivalent amount and reserve that along with all the user fees going forward.
So... Shouldn't the resolution say that, then? I mean, it literally implies that you're taking, we've had this money sitting there doing nothing for the last three years, and now we're going to move it over. I, I understand it's, all this money's fungible, it's all sitting in one account.
Yeah.
And it, it just seems to me like it's not really being honest about what we're doing.
So just to, to be clearer, so one of the things we could do is that third, third whereas, and we, is to revise that to reserve equivalent amount, we can define, we can, we can define the previous user fees correctly. We, we know what was collected, and basically all we're doing is reserving that amount. You can, as you said, it's, it's fungible, so whether you call it reserving user fees or, but the way you did the pro forma, it's important to reserve that money that was collected in open space from wherever it came from, on top of future user fees, and that gets us to the million plus to reskin. So we can, when we get to discussion, we can decide whether we want to change that, that whereas. Ben?
Thank you. I have two questions, and I guess, Pat, they'll both be directed to you.
Sure.
One has to do with the comparison of having a discussion now about reskining the fields versus the discussion that was had years ago when we first purchased the fields. It, to me, this is the proverbial no-brainer. It's as if you bought a car after long debate and discussion and research, and you ran that car, and one day you found out you needed new tires. I don't think you'd need to go back and have the same debate and discussion to justify buying new tires. So what we're doing is, in essence, buying new tires for this field. The only issue to me is how do you pay for it? And I'm on board with this, I'm sympathetic to what Mr. Luber said earlier, to my way of thinking, it's not worth $40,000 approximately in interest over 10 years of taxpayer money to satisfy what I view as really an issue of allocation of costs that doesn't, that I think counterarguments are at least, if not stronger, at least as strong, if not stronger. So one, I don't think our taxpayers want to see another $40,000 go to this, it doesn't have to, and the other one is, I have no idea what other additional subjects you feel we should be discussing, so I'm, that's a question.
And since we've moved to discussion, and Jim is no longer at the podium, we'll, we'll continue the discussion, so, Pat, and then I want to get Ostry.
I missed, what was the second question, Ben? I'm sorry.
I was asking, you had made the comment...
Yes.
That, in, that, and now I'm going to paraphrase, you didn't take notes, but you, you basically said, we need to have further discussion, and more of the people involved should be involved here, I think, and...
I apologize. I think, I think part of the issue is, I'm actually thinking about both resolutions, and more so about the second field that we're talking, or the additional field we're talking about adding. So I apologize, I probably shouldn't have been talking about that.
No, 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 no problem. I agree with you on the second field. My understanding is those discussions are at the earliest of early stage.
And, and, I, I understand what your position is, and I've had this position about multiple issues, where I think we're...
I know.
Pulling money out and asking people to pay taxes today for things that we may not purchase for, in this case, four years, in some case, 10 years or more.
Right.
And some of those residents will no, no longer be here, other people who aren't here today are going to move in, and I understand, sort of your analogy with funding the schools, I think that's a separate, we're not, we're not pre-funding the schools two or three years, that we're funding it in real time, which I think is an obligation of the borough and all residents by state law, so I don't, I don't disagree, we're going to have to reskin the fields, I think it's just a matter of how we fund it.
We agree to disagree.
Ostry, did you want...
Carmel, if you'd like to go first, and I'll go.
I just want to make two simple comments, okay? I'm listening to Zach, and he's talking about Monica Stadium, that had to be resurfaced in eight years. We're in our seventh year, okay? Let's think about being a little proactive here, all right? How do we know with the amount of use that is on those fields at this point, how long those fields are going to be used, or needing, need reskining? those fields are going to be used or need reskining? So I think we have to be a little proactive, and we have to move forward with how should we do this. I mean, we've been doing this in all of our capital projects, you know, looking out to the future five years. What is wrong with doing this now? And it kind of kills me, all of this, because, you know, these fields were not supposed to cost the taxpayer a dollar. I remember those words very, very strongly. And now, we have taken that burden and accepted that burden, and I think that we have to move forward with doing something like this. I see a great deal of good work being done here with putting the money aside. Listen, my kids have been at, I'm like Dave Luber, my kids have been out of school since 1990. You know, I don't have a problem with paying school tax. It's the same thing. My kids aren't using the fields, and guess what? My grandchildren aren't neither, because they can't afford to live in Madison. So what I'm saying is, we've got to be proactive. I absolutely agree with this. Sorry that, you know, some people feel that we're doing the wrong kind of thing, but I just think that we need to move forward with it. As far as the Resolution 281, you know...
We'll actually have a discussion, I guess, Pat already. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, we haven't moved, yeah, it hasn't been moved yet, but Pat already addressed it, so. I apologize. Keep on, you're on a roll, keep on going.
I'm on a roll.
Yes.
This is what I want to say about 281. All it says is that it's contingent upon matching financial support. That's a big word, contingent. We still have to have the discussion, but I think we have to say to the Board of Ed, listen, we're willing to do this. We want your support and have that conversation. Simple, that's all I wanted to say.
Ostry?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody, this was a long, seems like a long time ago. 2003, the voters of this town agreed that we needed an open space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. They were willing to spend two cents for every $100 of assessed value to put into a fund. I remember Chuck Ellis, Zach's father, coming up to me and saying, our fields are in terrible shape, we need to do something. We didn't have the money, and this fund provided money to preserve fields, to create the MRC, to preserve historic sites like the Luke Miller, to save our environmental resources, to protect our water supply, and to have open space. The people wanted it. This is something they agreed to. So this Resolution 280 tonight is before us to ensure that a funding mechanism is in place to re-turf the MRC fields when it is necessary. We do not want our children to have to wait because of unnecessary funding delays. That's what happened when we established the MRC. Our CFO, at the last council meeting, demonstrated that the open space trust fund is in good shape. The debt is decreasing. The user fees and rental fees can be encumbered to re-turf the fields, and I would like to make sure everyone understands that, because this has been out there this week, too. Field Turf, the company that installed the fields, used a superior product, and that our fields are not defective, but they are heavily used and may need reskining sooner than the warranty states. The Recreation Committee has been discussing this issue of reskining for several years now. Having recently been a liaison to the committee, I recall the discussions about the difficulties of fundraising for the reskining and discussing the alternatives, including user fees and rental fees to reskin. When the Open Space Committee met in September, the Recreation Director attended, he discussed the issues with the reskining and supported the recommendation for reskining. This is called planning, so that our children will have assurances that there will be playing fields in Madison. The Open Space Committee toured the parks this summer, our fields, and concluded that these facilities need help. That is one of the reasons Don Bowen and I pushed for the Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Trust Fund a lot of years ago. And more importantly, Madison is attractive because of the many reasons of good schools, parks, recreational facilities. That makes our property values valuable. A plan to make sure funds are available when needed is prudent and smart. Regarding Resolution 281, that is just the beginning of a process with the school board. That's all it's asking for. Sit down with the school board, we do have the money, we want to make sure we have the money, because we desperately need more fields. Our grass fields can't rest. The Recreation Committee has studied this and discussed the need for an additional turf field. Under Mayor Mariana Holden, there was a master plan calling for a Phase 2 turf project adjacent to the MRC and located on school property. In this resolution, we are looking to explore the feasibility of a joint project with the school board to add an additional turf field. This is an ideal area for the reasons Zach stated, because it can handle the lights, it can handle the parking, and it takes the burden off of grass fields and existing turf fields. I expect that this will be discussed at the next Share Services Committee. The Open Space Committee in making these recommendations took into consideration, right now, the potential for land acquisitions, historic preservation, and realized, right now, the parks and fields need some attention. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Well, I just want to, two things. One, I did live through the Monica Field reskining headache. That was a substandard product. Unfortunately, they needed to be replaced, actually, probably after about three years. The good news is, these fields are not in that shape, and they should live well past their eight-year warranty period. I am going to vote no on 280 for the same reasons that I voted last time no. I would just like them duly noted in the minutes. I'm not in opposition to reskining, it's just a matter of how we're going to fund it. In terms of the 281, although yes, but I still think that we really should do a much better job of the planning for that. I was on the Board of Ed at the time when we were, the council was developing the MRC, and I thought collectively, we missed an opportunity by not doing a better job of including that field at the time. But the council at the time decided to go ahead without sort of a joint venture, and it's, I'm glad to see we're probably going to rectify that situation at this point.
So we have a suggestive revision of the resolution to clarify the past fund, so it's basically to, not that we're, you know, as pointed out, money is fungible, so we're to transfer equivalent amount of what was collected, because that was part of the pro forma. We need to...
Yeah, amend the...
Yeah, make a motion to a...
So, let me read it, let me read it so that you guys...
Pick whichever one you like.
Yeah. I'll read, I can read yours easier. Okay, so, it's going to read as follows. This is the amended Resolution 280-2018, Resolution of the Borough of Madison, Amending Resolution 275-2011, which dedicated user fees and rental income to the MRC debt service. And the change in it is in the third whereas clause, and it'll read, whereas, the Borough Council wishes now to reserve and restrict the equivalent user and rental fees from 2016 to 2018, and the user rental fees from 2019 forward, for reskining of turf fields 1 and 2 at the Madison Recreation Center. And then in the now therefore be resolved clause, it will be revised to read, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morris and the State of New Jersey, that Resolution 275-2011 is hereby amended to provide that the equivalent recreation user fee and rental fees collected from 2016 to 2018, and the user and rental fees from 2019 forward, be restricted and set aside for the reskining of turf fields 1 and 2 at the Madison Recreation Center.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend R280 as just read.
Do I have a second?
So my question is, is this substantive changes tonight? Should we hold this resolution?
No. It's a resolution, so, yeah.
Yeah, you're okay.
Just clear versions.
All right, thank you.
There's a clarification.
I just wanted to make sure that we don't rush through this.
Yeah. And we got the second?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
So I'm clear, Mayor, this is only 280.
This is 280, yes.
I only moved 280.
Yes, we only moved 280.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion on Resolution 281?
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution R281-2018.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, since we covered it quite a bit? I just, I'll just reinforce the same thing. This is contingent on Board of Education doing the same thing, but it certainly solidifies our intent to work with them to deliver another field, and that we have the money set aside. So I think that may help things move forward, and if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Can I ask one question? Do we have any ballpark idea what the cost is for what we're talking about?
You know, I think part of the issue right now is, we don't have final designs, whether it's, I think we've looked at rectangle fields, we looked at incorporated baseball field, and it's a matter of exactly what it is. If I recall, the master plan from seven years ago already, eight years ago, it was, I think, another equivalent of $3 million at that point, but that plan may no longer be valid.
It shouldn't be that high, because it's only one plus. It's sort of like the one...
Plus inflation.
Yeah. Because that's going to be the first question the Board of Ed asks us.
Right. And it might be imported from China, which means it's more expensive, too. Sorry. All right. Any other further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay. There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers, will a clerk please read the voucher?
Okay, the current fund, $205,332.71. General capital fund, $123,530.73. Electric operating fund, $310,446.7. And the electric capital fund, $16,097.27. Water operating fund, $1,818.70. And the trust, $203,258.36. Total is $860,483.84.
Mr. Mayor, I move the bill list.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Pat?
Yeah, I plan to vote against purchase order number 18-00190. It's a submission from a professional service for a couple of emails that totaled almost three-quarters of an hour. If they took more than five minutes to write, I'll fall over dead.
Switch, oh, it's a voucher.
Voucher is invoice 18-11723. Oh, yeah, I gave Liz the information before.
Okay, so...
I'll vote a yes on everything else.
Michael Bol.
Okay, if we can...
Can vote on the rest?
Well, we'll amend the resolution for, the approval for all vouchers except for that one, and we'll vote on that one separately. Okay.
Yeah.
No. No. We had a second, yeah, second, we did have a second comment, period, sorry. Yep, yep. So amended...
I amend my previous motion of the bill list, with the exception of this one voucher.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Or, oh, sorry, and Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
All right, motion for the remaining voucher, please.
I move the one voucher, 18-11723.
What are we voting on?
You can vote, you can second it.
It's Michael Bol.
You can second it first.
Second.
Or do we, can we, can we hold that, should we just hold that one for the, and just...
It'd be good to hold it at least until after Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, let's hold, we'll hold it pending clarification, and we'll approve it at the next...
It might be valid.
Yep, so, we'll get the clarification. Thank you. So with that in mind, let's go to, there is no new business, so, John?
Oh, I move that we adjourn.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No, I know.
I know.
Okay.
Thank you all.
As long as you're alive.
Anytime.
Bring your copy, Mike.
What you send me, send me another tomorrow. Let me say, think about what you want, and then we'll change it, and we'll send it back.